Okay, we're gonna go... So I gotta go back up and then turn around. Okay, I took the cone with me. Didn't plan on that, but it happened.
Okay, Zack. I've been thinking about what movie I'd like to watch next. And finally, I've made a decision. It's always hard to narrow it down just...
Okay, give me a second, cuz I gotta check this map. Okay, so I gotta go... Over there. So I go up... And then over there. Okay. But I can go up and investigate this town, so I could do that. Sounds good. So let's go up here. There should be a road going up here somewhere. Yep, right there. I completely missed that pole. I got so lucky. Alright. So here's this little town up here, that I could probably walk around, inspect, check out, all that fun stuff. I don't see why I can't. I have the time. Let me park here. And we can run around. So my car's next to Polk Street. So let's walk around in here. Check out places. Maybe there's stuff. Maybe I get stuck in a tree. Just maybe. You could only hope. That leads out to the street. There's cars in here. These dogs sound like ferocious, like they're... they just sound evil, but they're not. They're just doggies. That's all it is. Is this a bar? Is this a bar? If it is, I wanna go have a drink. I need to find a way into this bar. I think there was... No, there wasn't. Yep, there is, right here. Go around. This might be a bar up here. Right here! They're closed! Ooh, there's a thing up there. Okay, come on. Ooh, record player. I've got a record player. See? It does pay to look around, doesn't it? It does. Let's peek. They're closed. Pish posh. What kind of bar closes so early in the day? Don't they... ooh, I have to come in here at some point because there's that right there. Okay. So now I know to come to the bar. It's not too far away from the hotel. Maybe we can see if there's shops around here? Maybe we can look around? Look around a little more? Once this loading screen becomes done with loading? Let me see what other stuff's around here. I shouldn't really wander too far away from my car, actually. Except my car now disappeared. That's awesome. Where'd my cargo? Eh, my car was over here. My car was over here. My car is no longer over here! God damn it. Can I have your car? Sir, I need a... there's a car over here, maybe I can just take one? No, I can't just take any car, can't I? No, I can't. Well, that's unfortunate. Thomas! Thomas!
Hello?
Can I... Looks somewhat nervous, though I sense inner strength in him. Can I... can I... Get a ride with you? Fine. Asshole. I'll just run myself. Thanks. God damn it! Okay, maybe I'm not as fast as the car, but he drives a fucking Volkswagen Beetle. So I'm just a really slow car, it's okay. I'm honestly not going that much slower than him. I just have to stop periodically so I don't die. God damn it. God damn it, Thomas! You can't beat me! Can I have a car now? Please? No. I am right here, though. Oh, sweet! There's George! Fine. Let's just start this meeting, can't we? Yeah, it looks like we can. Or not, cuz it's early.
Zack, Emily arranged for people to come between 1500 and 1700. We can't do anything here right now. Let's come back at the right time.
Alright. Gonna waste forty-five frickin' minutes. Let's look around. Ooh, pretty tree. And there is someone at the door. Hello, everyone! It's GamerCat09 and welcome back to... Let's Play Deadly Premonition Blind. It's been an insanely long time since I've last played this game that, uh... I nearly almost forget how to play it, but I got a car again, thanks to that random car spawning and my saving. I'm picking up from last time, and I believe last time, we had to kill Time... Before we ended up going to a meeting. Now, this is the part that confuses me, and I know a lot of you in the comments are kind of raging about how I don't really know how to play. Please understand I've never played a game like this before, ever. Like, I've never had to feed something or... I better get... okay. See, 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 I... what am I doing? Am I... Okay, I'm going... Yes, no, maybe? I don't know. What am I doing? What am I doing? That's a map. That's... Does my ass light up? Yeah, I guess it does. Um... Oh, it's my... no, I don't wanna... I want that. Okay. So, I have infinite ammo forever on my handgun, for whatever reason, which is really super nice. I need to feed myself. As I was trying to say, I really don't know how to play this game, as well as... I guess you guys are hoping I do. I'm learning as I go. But what I do understand is I have to kill another half hour before I'm able to even enter this place. So, um... Let's run, that's... That's the creep. Okay, L2 is to run. L... oh, yeah. Not L2, R2. R2 runs. R1 aims. Um... Square makes my ass light up. Okay, or anything here, nothing here, okay. Let's, uh... Get something... To eat, because... I have a shit-ton of money. Sweet! I got a lollipop. I don't know why it costed twenty-five dollars for a lollipop. And crackers. For whatever reason, it cost forty dollars for crackers. So let me, um, get that. Goes here. Um... I'm gonna have some crackers. No, I can't eat the worm. Is there any drinks I can buy? Coffees. Just coffees. Already have those, so I don't need those. What I do need to do is I gotta kill Time, so maybe I will smoke a cigarette. Cuz that's what we do, we smoke when we wanna kill Time. So... It's a heavy cigarette. Fuck it. Let's smoke. Think it's time already. I think so. Yep! That is awesome, how I can control the time smoking a cigarette. That's pretty crazy. Alright, so, uh... I can't enter there. I have to go around. I walked all the way behind the building because I have to go all the way in front of the building, I guess. I forget, do I... I do have stamina, don't I, here? There we go. Here's the meeting. Time for the meeting. That I've been waiting forever for. At the Greenville...
Greenville Community Center.
Thank you.
Now, that's an impressive building. Clock Tower is impressive, too.
It's just a building. Although the doorknobs look like soup cans, so at least it has that going for it. Oh, we're back to my favorite tune. It's moments like these that make you wonder, should you even bother taking the game seriously or not? That is a giant place reserved for very little people.
Zack, I haven't been on stage like this since elementary school.
Cuz it looks like an elementary stage.
I'm not some tree in the wind this time either.
Sure about that?
That was a tough role. I was a piece of scenery. Bright red tree.
Thank you, all for coming today. Getting right down to business. Agent Morgan, from the Federal Bureau of Investigations, wishes to speak with you.
Absolutely. Hello.
Good afternoon. I'm Special Agent Francis York Morgan. Some of you are already aware by now of the tragic murder of Anna Graham. Truly a heinous, terrible crime.
Except those twins, they apparently think she's beautiful.
I've come to this town to solve the murder of this young, beautiful girl. And to bring the one responsible to justice.
Sounds good. Now, which one of you did it? Just come clean, raise your hand, and we'll all go on with our lives. Sound good?
Unfortunately, incidents like these have a tendency to happen again. I asked to have you gathered here so I can share some advice in order to minimize the risk of further fatal incidents. Firstly, please, stay away from any dark, dangerous, isolated places.
First and foremost, that!
Those of you with children, especially of Anna's age, please, guide your children away from such places at all costs.
She couldn't be that young.
Secondly, avoid going out when it is raining. Now, I've heard the folklore story of the Raincoat Killer. There is a chance that the murderer is mimicking the story. Women should also be especially careful. I would hate to see more victims...
Oh, speaking of which... Carol McLean, bar owner and singer. Ooh, she's a singer, too! She kinda looks like it. Am I profiling? I think I'm profiling.
Who's the fashionable, elite one?
That's Carol, Thomas's sister. She owns a bar.
Thomas's sister?
Oh...
Now, excuse me. So, as I have said, avoid going outside when it is raining. Young women should be especially careful. Report anything or anyone suspicious immediately. The murderer will be caught and brought to justice. But you must all remain on guard until we do so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Couldn't we have just... Posted up a memo on the bulletin board about this? We didn't really have to make a big announcement. Seems like a waste of time. He's the most evil asshole ever. He just looks the part. He probably has nothing to do with the Raincoat Killer, but he just looks really evil. Like something is up with him.
When paying for our sins, we must not frown. The loss of Anna was for that debt.
Also, does he have a metal cap on? Is he afraid of aliens communicating to him? He might be.
When purple fog covers our town, we'll all wander in hell, I fret. So says Mr. Stewart.
All three of those people on the right just did the same notion.
Sure knows how to steal thunder.
Well then, Zack, let's ask some questions before all these guys leave.
Aw. I was just getting into it, too. Alright. So let's talk. Thomas, how do you feel about your sister?
Agent York, your words really made me think about Anna's death again.
I'm sorry.
How could one do such a terrible thing?
People are assholes.
I'm still in shock.
I highly doubt that.
Thomas, I forgot to ask. You don't have a tattoo on your back, do you?
A tattoo? I do, actually, but why?
Could you show it to me, please?
What? Now? Here?
Yes, please. This is vital for our investigation.
Oh, god.
Okay, if it's gonna help you any.
Oh, god. He's gonna strip. It's gonna be awkward.
Well, I'm wondering who G is now, but aside from that... Did it tell you anything? It told me that you didn't kill Anna.
Of course not! What are you saying?
Jesus.
You oughta see that tattoo, Zack.
I...
A big heart with an arrow through it and "Love G" in the center.
Oh, god.
I don't know when he got that done, but... We've all been through the eighties.
Yeah. Yes, we have. Looks somewhat nervous. Okay. So... George, what's going on?
Agent Morgan, here's your chance to get to know some of the townsfolk. Don't let it go to waste.
Okay, thanks for the helpful advice, man. Can't go up there. There are stairs. There's no one else up here, okay. I guess I have to talk to you.
Quite a performance. Mysterious and very poetic. But I don't think many of your audience appreciated it.
He could just directly talk to me, you know. I'm standing right here.
Mr. Francis York Morgan. The purple fog appears with rain. Soiling and ruining our town. The evil does not drain. Find out why the town is soiled. Remove the source from which it boiled. Then and only then, your case is solved. But for this to happen, to solve the crime, the proper must do the proper at the proper time. It is not yet mine, that is, Mr. Stewart's time, not mine. But if you, Mr. York, find the right timing to chat with me, that is, with Mr. Stewart, may that be... Informative and fruitful, you will seem. So says Mr. Stewart.
So, Harry, you know something. But there's some reason why you can't tell me yet. Is that what you're trying to say?
Cut the poetic rubbish, Harry, and tell us what you know. We could force you to talk, you know.
I'm just observing this whole situation. I'm getting entertained.
Pay close attention to the signs, the omens and the premonitions. Small they may be, they still are finds and helpful to your investigations. So says Mr. Stewart.
Thanks for the warning, Harry, but don't worry. Me and Zack, we know what we're doing.
And then they vanish. No, no, they're in the next room. They just frickin' warp. You know, if he had a different tone and he talked a little faster, he could rap. He's very good at rhyming. Um, why is everyone staring upward? Emily, what you got to say?
Agent York, are you finished asking questions yet?
No.
When you're done, let me know. We'll all get dinner.
Ooh, dinner! I like dinner! Everyone likes some dinner. Who else can I talk to? I'm guessing none of you guys. Hmm. No? That sign's glitching. Doesn't seem like I can talk to anybody else, so I'm just gonna move along. Oh, I get coffee! Yay, coffee! Okay. So... Who else? Do... duh... I... okay, cool. So I can't talk to anybody in here, I guess. I guess I'm done questioning people? I've asked those two. I don't know if I can go out here. Oh, I can go out here. This just kinda goes out and around. I don't wanna do... wah! I gotta run, and then I gotta... Go... Badoosh! Ooh, who's that guy? Hello? Who are you?
Good evening, Agent.
Ooh! He's the gravekeeper, Brian the Insomniac. He looks creepy!
Brian, the gravekeeper. Brian.
Mr. Brian? I like the retro look. Auditioning for Little Grave on the Prairie?
Anna, oh, she was so beautiful. Too soon.
Are you the dude from Corpse Bride?
Too soon to go to the grave. So sad, so sad.
But it gives you work, so you don't mind that.
I totally agree. That's why I'm here, looking for the one who did it. Were you close to her?
Hmmmm... Yeah, to her body.
Anna, haha, her smile, so warm. Anna, blond hair, so bright.
Everyone's gone batty.
There's a graveyard somewhere in town, Zack. I'm not excited about the idea, but maybe we should at least check it out.
I'm perfectly fine with that because maybe that'll be the most normal thing in the city. And I do mean most normal. Who are you guys? Q. There's a Q on your hat. Oh, you're the...
I'm FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan.
You're going for the torn look in your pants.
So Anna was killed. But why does that bring the FBI here?
Quint Dunn, Darts Bar employee. That explains the Q.
I have an interest in murder cases involving young women.
Well, you know, man, this might just be another case to you. But it means the death of a friend to me, and I want you taking this lightly like it's just another case.
I'm not trying to...
I never take anything of this nature lightly, I assure you. I'm here to apprehend the perpetrator who did this.
Yeah, because local enforcement can't shine their own boots, right?
Good point. You can't always count on the police now, can you? But that doesn't mean you're going to capture the perpetrator yourself, Quint.
How do you know my name?
Um...
I memorize the name of every citizen before arriving in town. I also know about you and your significant other.
You mean Becky?
Don't underestimate the FBI. We know and see everything.
Big Brother's always watching.
I'm sorry if I was a little harsh.
No, you're not.
I wanna help, I do. Okay? Okay, Zack, I'll tell you how I knew his name. He's got a small Q on his hat.
I know that.
That was the only name beginning with Q that I could think of. He was even kind enough to tell us his girlfriend's name. I can read him like a book, Zack.
Well, there's Quinn. Quinn is a name. I think you just added a T. I don't know why you would just go for Quint. So that's Quint, and who are you? Durkey?
You're York, right? I'm Richard Dunn, the owner of the Darts Bar, Swery65.
Richard Dunn Darts Bar. What's in your hat? Is that Durkey? I don't know.
How'd you like the town?
Oh, it's great. Aside from the murder that happened here.
Yep, murder just doesn't fit with a small town like ours.
Well, Richard, I'll have to correct you on that. Crimes don't care about size. Big town, small town, just isn't a factor.
I guess you're right.
So... How did you know Anna?
I've known her since she was a child. She was the same age as my son. She always stood out, being pretty and all, just like her mother, Sally.
What do you know about Sally?
Well, I went all through school with her right here in town. I never thought our children would be the same age.
I don't see her here today.
Ah, well, see, she lost her husband, and this time it's her daughter. She's at home right now, trying to make peace with it all.
You seem to know a lot. How long have you been in love with her?
Hey, hey, don't go there. That scar of yours tells me you got your hands full, too, right? Let's not dive into personal matters. It'll be better for you and me.
You're right, Richard. Collecting gossip won't help with the matter at hand.
So you had a love affair with Anna's mother? Mm-hmm... Who else is around here? Oh, there's more suspects. More people. Oh, it's Polly! I'mma take that. Thanks, Polly. Who are you? What are you doing? You have a pot and you're dancing. Stop doing that. You have a change purse on... around your neck.
Oh, my! My pot is getting cold.
I bet it is. Roaming Sigourney? Nicknamed the Pot Lady?
Hey, mister, my pot is getting cold!
You are... Who?
What are you saying? I'm Sigourney. Sigourney!
Are you polite?
Sigourney, okay. Now, what is the matter? Can you explain?
No time for chatting. I need to hurry. My pot is getting colder. Oh, you're useless.
Zack, we've met all sorts today, but...
Yeah.
Really, she takes the cake. Amazing.
Okay, Sigourney, I'mma let your pocket colder and I'mma go over here, okay? So I'm good, alright, cool. There's Jim. There's a suspect. Dressed like... Da... The slut. Yeah.
Hey, good-looking. Nice speech.
Who are you? Gina the Rose, Jack's wife. Oh...
And you are?
Oh, I'm Gina. I'm married to Jack. He runs the gas station. Call me the Rose.
You look pretty... revealing.
Oh, this old thing. You should see some of my other clothes.
You? Ooh, now you are cool. That scar really is a turn-on. You should come to my station. I'll give you a little extra service.
You should come to my station. I'll give you a little extra service.
I bet you would.
That would be great. I can't believe how expensive gasoline is nowadays. Some extra service would be great. Now, about my current case. Do you have any information on Anna?
God, you're a dick.
Have you seen anything suspicious?
Oh, I don't know. Talk to my hubby about the difficult stuff, okay?
This is getting us nowhere, Zack.
Yeah, just a bit.